September sixteenth, City Council Public Hearing. Welcome to everyone here and at home. The first public hearing item is -- oh, I have a couple of comments I want to make before we get started this evening. I just want to remind everyone here this evening that it's important to have a respectful environment in our council meetings where all community members feel safe to express their views. To that end, we ask for no applause, boos, or comments that express approval or disapproval of a person's perspective who has taken the time to come to speak to council. In nine years of council meetings, we have achieved this goal. If we have a person who refuses to comply, I will ask council to leave the room until order can be reestablished and we can go on with the meeting. Very important issues that are currently in front of council and in front of our community. People have great passion regarding these issues, and each of us knows that and values hearing from you, the public. Thank you. So, the first item up is a public hearing on annexation for the Pennington Family Trust. And those wishing to speak during this public hearing should have already submitted a completed request to speak form to the information desk. Do any councilors need to disclose any conflicts of interest or ex parte contacts?
No.
Seeing one saying yes. City Manager, would you please introduce the topic and state the approval criteria?
Thank you, Mayor. This item is a public hearing on a request to annex seventeen point five-five acres of vacant land located near the intersection of Maxwell Road and North Park Avenue. Annexation requests are subject to the approval criteria, the Eugene Code nine point seven-eight-two-five, which require that the land is within the UGB, is contiguous to the city limits, is consistent with applicable city policies, and will result in a boundary in which the minimal level of key urban facilities and services can be provided in an orderly, efficient, and timely manner.
Thank you. Testimony presented must be directed towards the approval criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes to apply to the decision. The failure of anyone to raise an issue accompanied by statements are evidence sufficient to afford the city council and parties an opportunity to respond will preclude appeal on that issue. The failure to raise constitutional or other issues relating to the proposed conditions of approval with sufficient specificity to allow the council to respond to the issue precludes an action for damages in Circuit Court. We only have one person signed up for this hearing, and that is Rick Satri.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Rick Satri with Shermer Satri Group. I don't live in Eugene, I live in Springfield, but my office is in the Whittaker neighborhood in Claire Soretz Ward. I want to, first of all, appreciate staff assistance and recommendation of approval of this annexation request. I appreciate their comment on page one of the agenda item summary, which reminds all of us that the zone change criteria are three specific criteria, as the city manager outlined a moment ago. Any questions regarding any future applications regarding zone change or any development plans are not part of the annexation request. Should anything of that nature move forward in the future, we can all remind ourselves that they too would be subject to public comment, and in the case of a zone change, a public hearing opportunity for the community. I'm available should the council or the mayor have any questions at all. Thank you.
Thank you. So, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the council has any questions. I see none. At this time, we'll close the public hearing and the public record. So, with that, we are through with this item. All right, we'll move on to our next public hearing. And that is an ordinance concerning publication of snow emergency route maps. City Manager, would you introduce the topic, please?
Thank you, Mayor. The Eugene Code currently requires that every October, the city must publish a snow emergency route map in the newspaper. To meet this requirement and to provide information that is legible and distinguishes the various priority routes, the city purchases a nearly full-page color ad at a cost of more than four thousand dollars. Staff is proposing to eliminate this newspaper publication requirement and continue to follow best management practices to provide timely and effective notification to the public in the event of an ice or snow emergency. Following tonight's public hearing, the council is scheduled to take action on the ordinance change on September twenty-third.
Thank you. I'm going to open the public hearing. No one has signed up. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there are any questions or comments from council. Seeing none, we will -- yes, Councilor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. My -- I didn't really study this so much before tonight, and I'm wondering what alternative means are being contemplated, just briefly, to alert people to the -- any emergency route map changes?
I'll ask --
Besides the full-page ad?
I'll ask Eric Jones from our Public Works Department to address that.
The primary way that we show people where the snow routes are is on the Internet. The advantage, actually, of an Internet map is that it's zoomable, so that you can actually zoom in on a particular area or street and see it. The resolution, even at the color ad reproduction in the newspaper, is very difficult for most people to see. So, it is and will continue to be available on the Internet, or we can print copies and mail them if people contact our Public Works Maintenance Office. Two examples.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now, we'll move on to the third public hearing item. This is an ordinance concerning permitted overnight sleeping. And while she's bringing those up, I want to point out to you that we have two options here for people who are testifying. If you want to sit, you can sit there and testify into that mic. If you prefer to stand, you can stand up in front of that one and use that mic. So accommodate both standing or sitting, whichever you prefer. There are twenty-seven people signed up. Did I officially open it? City Manager, do you want to tell people what it pertains to?
I will, Mayor, thank you. On July ten, council provided direction on a proposed ordinance to address homeless issues. This is a public hearing on that proposed ordinance. Three changes are proposed. First, the ordinance would make permanent the ability to use Canostoga huts or tents instead of a vehicle for permitted overnight camping. Second, the ordinance would increase from three to six, the number of vehicles that could be used for camping in an authorized parking lot. And third, the ordinance would authorize, as a pilot, the creation of a rest stop camping site for up to fifteen individuals in a location that would be approved by the council.
Thank you. First up this evening is Todd Hurlbert, followed by Sabra Markroft.
Thank you for letting me address you. I'd like to come here not to share the concept that we use in the Whoville sites that are up around your city right now. We also believe in that number fifteen. It works really well. That amount of people in the smaller environments, much more manageable, must less impact on the community, the neighborhoods. I have for you guys letters to the editor from the neighborhoods that the Whovilles have been in so far, and we've gotten overwhelming support. I think that we spoke last meeting about the Dairy Mark site. I've looked at that. We could immediately put in four camps with ten to fifteen people in each, which suggests we try it for a six-month trial period, at the same time have a moratorium in the city of Eugene on tickets for camping, and begin working together on this issue in more on an umbrella approach instead of trying to dissect each individual problem. One thing we've learned at Whoville is a safe night's sleep, a secure night's sleep, is the first step to any of the problems that we're going to talk about later. People cannot get a job, they cannot get an apartment, they cannot make an appointment if they don't sleep the night before. With no money from the city and private donations, over the last four to five weeks, we've been able to create an environment where that's becoming possible. With your guys' help, we can. I know people think more is always better, but if we bring a lot of people into one spot, all those problems that you're afraid of are going to happen. And if we don't utilize the land we already have, we're wasting the site. To put fifteen people on a random basis on a site that can facilitate forty to fifty people would be underutilizing that property. So hopefully, I can talk to you guys later this week with a more detailed proposal, but I think that if we work together, we can find a resolution. Winter's coming, and I can tell you, all these people in tents do not want to sit out there in the rain all winter waiting for a decision that doesn't come in springtime. So let's try to get everybody out of the rain.
Sabra Markroft is next, followed by either Arthur or Charlene Toler.
I'm Sabra Markroft. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. I wanted to speak to the unmet need within all of these proposals that people are making. There are people who have physical disabilities who are currently homeless in Eugene. One person spoke in front of the city council last meeting about that. Those two people are at one of the Whoville camps, the woman and her son. They have nowhere to go while we figure out why their OHP coverage was denied, and most likely, it'll be January before they get this all figured out. That's what they're telling us. So, until January, there's nowhere to go. The mission will not take her because she cannot feed, clothe, and bathe herself, and because of the gender separation, they cannot allow her son to care for her. So, she is without a place. There's another gentleman who uses a power wheelchair who I have not met yet, who's at one of the camps now. There are lots of folks that cannot be served by the mission, that will not be served by, what is it, five available beds that are usually reserved for severely mentally ill people at the Royal Avenue Shelter. What will we do with people who have severe physical and mental disabilities? If we just let them freeze on the street corners, then we know what kind of people we are because we allowed that to happen. There are also the issues of women who are without shelter, women and children, who need a place to be. There are not enough shelter beds, there are not enough -- I mean, they have room for five children at the mission now with their new program? Five children? Where will they go? Will they go to a mixed camp of fifteen people? What if we fill it all up with women and children? Then where will everyone else go? Please stop ticketing people. Please stop ticketing people for trying to survive. Thank you very much for making this attempt to do something. Please make the attempt succeed instead of failing through faint heart. Thank you.
Either Arthur or Charlene Toler, followed by Michael Carrigan.
I am here to --
Why don't you introduce yourself?
My name is Charlene Toler. I am here to remind you of why I came in last week on your meeting on those homeless being put into a shelter that they can use, even if it's just at nighttime, so that they have a safe place to sleep. And if they want to do the camping program, put them into an open field where there's trash cans and toilets available. On the homeless shelter for the rest of them that don't have the cars, campers, tents, where else are they supposed to go? How else are they supposed to have a safe place to go to, to sleep at night, be able to have breakfast in the morning, without having some type of a shelter so that they can survive and not be in the cold when it's cold and raining outside, and they have no place to go to as well? People that are disabled, like with my husband, who uses a power chair. There's no place to plug it in at night. We have to literally find a place that we can charge up his chair various times throughout the day without having a safe place to go to at night that we can have electricity to where we can plug in his chair all night. If it is plugged in all night, he's able to go all day without charging it up again. Without it being charged at night, we have to charge it at least twelve to eighteen times throughout the day. That is way too much on charging that chair. Having a shelter for the homeless, even on vacant buildings until they can get into a place to live, and have it be just a temporary spot, is better than nothing. And having a spot where on the vacant buildings, put trash cans out there, have the electricity on so they can have heat on at night, be able to fix breakfast in the morning, I think it would be a real good idea to have a lot for the homeless. And even the ones with the car camping, they can go there for breakfast as well, too, and be able to at least have --
Thank you. -- more meal. Michael Carrigan is next, followed by Reverend Wayne Martin.
My name is Michael Carrigan. I represent Community Alliance of Laine County. I'm a proud resident of Ward Seven. We support increasing from three to six the number of vehicles or tents or Canostoga huts in the car camping program. And we also strongly support authorizing the continued use of Canostogas in this, I think wonderfully successful, program. I want to thank councilors and city staff for your work to create a rest stop, but also your decisions to expand the car camping program, increase funding for the Eagan Warming Center, and more. This is good work, but so much more needs to be done. Calc supports the rest stop idea. We agree with Councilor Zelenka that the rest stop needs to be small so they can be more easily managed. However, we feel strongly that the rest stops must be open twenty-four-seven, with the caretaker or caretakers with porta-potties and trash and recycling receptacles paid for by the rest stop residents and the community. And we need more than one established in Eugene. I've been very impressed with the rest stop sleeps that's set up in our community. Being from Ward Seven, I'm most familiar with the Whoville rest stop that was set up at River Road and the Northwest Expressway. The camp had a porta-potty paid for by the community, was clean and pleasing to the eye, and was safe and well-run. It was well-received by many of the neighbors. We are facing an emergency. We need to get as many people as possible off the streets before the rain and cold return. Instead of citing people who are camping within city limits, I urge the city to allow sleeps, the use of some pieces of property scattered around the city to establish places for folks to sleep this winter. Together, we can make Eugene a safe place for all to be this fall and winter. Thank you.
Councilor Clark is on the phone. He wished for me to let you know that he's listening. Reverend Wayne Martin is next, followed by Michael Adams.
Good evening, Mayor and council. My name is Wayne Martin. I live at one-two-two-three Washington Street in Councilman Brown's district. I've been here before. I'm a retired pastor, having moved here to observe the actions of my darling daughter, Erin Martin, who's the pastor over at Wesley Church in Oakway. She happens to have two Canostogas there, and is really, really sympathetic to the causes we're talking about. So I'm going to -- I'm here to ask for one thing, but I'd like to take a little bit of time before I do. Then it'll give you an idea of why I'm asking for that one thing. First, shortly after I arrived here, I was asked to be on the steering committee of the Opportunity Village, Eugene, and it was a rich and rewarding experience. We're all feeling really positive about our work and about the cooperation we're getting from the residents there. I've also been on the vetting committee, so was active in helping to select the people that are there now. And I'm now involved in an education task group where members of the residents there and the community are talking about starting a small academy there on-site, and maybe even as well off-site, to start working on skill-building and some, even some psychological and social skills. In July, I became very active because I happened to have a car in trying to assist people in moving from first the ODOT property and then the VLM property. You can only imagine, and I know you can well imagine, the creativity involved in trying to help people move. Since May, I've been attending court appearances whenever I'm asked to, to offer some calm and also some calming support to people who are not easily calmed, and I'm appreciating the results of that work. In early August, I was present at the site when the arrest happened at Sixth and Ferry, and I had my prayer book with me, and we had a prayer service following the arrests. These are small things. I'm very involved now, just in kind of daily upkeep with people who need help. I'm asking for this. I'd like to offer you the opportunity to put up three homeless parks, rest stops. I think you could easily do one. I think it would be in your best interests and in the eyes of the public. Right now, I think it would persuade them. So I would put that on the table and ask you for that.
Michael Adams is next, followed by Joshua Tonkin, AKA Jersey.
My name is Michael Adams. I've been attending these council meetings for a little bit now, and since I arrived back here in December, I've seen a bit of a change. I'm originally from here, but I've been six years over on the East Coast, and this homeless problem, as far as growing population is concerned, it's not so big a problem over there. You can get ticketed over there on the sidewalk, and then they tell you to walk away and go find somewhere else to sleep, so you go sleep in a railroad. Okay, that works sometimes if you can stand being woken up by the rumbling trains, but we don't have that here. So we don't have that out-of-sight, out-of-mind option. Here in Eugene, I'm watching as people struggle and struggle and struggle to get a good night's rest and then turn around and use the resources, try to use the resources, mind you, because they haven't gotten any good sleep. I remind you that one of the first times I spoke in here, I stated that without a good night's rest, how would you perform at work? Would you perform at your best? You would not. So hearing that the council is proposing one rest stop, which will house, I believe, roughly fifteen people, please correct me if I'm wrong, I'm getting all the numbers straight still, that we've got over three thousand homeless here in Eugene alone. Not all of them are native from Eugene, obviously. We have a lot of transit because we attract a lot of tourism. So how are we going to take -- how are we going to decipher who's who? Who's from Eugene, who's not from Eugene? Because guarantee, if you ask them that, they're just going to say, "Well, why does that matter? I'm homeless." So we need to up the number of rest stops. If that's what you're proposing, we need to up the number, and we need to up it significantly. Significantly. One rest stop with fifteen people is not even a dent in three thousand plus here in the city of Eugene. So please, keep in mind that we have those huge numbers, and we need to increase that.
Next is Joshua Tonkin, or Jersey, followed by Peter Griticelli.
Mayor Kitty Piddly is a member of the council. Last week, members of the Safe Legally Entitled Emergency Places to Sleep in the SFA --
Could you introduce yourself, please?
Oh, I'm Joshua Tonkin, also known as Jersey. But last week, members of the Safe Legally Entitled Emergency Places to Sleep in the SFA, Street Family Alliance, standing in solidarity, myself included, stood before you and implored you to change your stance and aggressive tactics towards protesters and homeless civilians alike. Furthermore, my fellow activists and protester, Rusty Leaf Savage and myself, sent liaisons of a sort to you, requesting that you come meet us face-to-face on top of the Public Service Building to prove your self-proclaimed stance as a humanitarian and friend of the homeless. Once again, you ignored the pleas of Rusty and I, two members of the Whittaker community, the same people who were your most avid supporters during your election, by trying to hide the meeting from public eye. You acted as a dictator by sending the EPD to arrest and brutally assault multiple members over a peaceful and nonviolent protest. These actions are no better than that of dictators such as Napoleon, Adolf Hitler, and Queen Victoria. Looking back on this, I feel it is my duty to once again implore you to stop these heinous acts of brutality against humanity. Give the people what is promised them by right of birth and human nature. Stop waking people up who are just trying to sleep. Stop harassing the hungry who are just trying to eat. It is a scientific fact that these people's blood bleeds red the same as you and I. Each person feels the same pain. We are all children of the same world. Each one of us is a son, daughter, sibling to someone who will be just as devastated at the loss of their kin. Imagine these children that you so cold-heartedly silenced last week were your son or daughter who was forced to sleep outside in the cold without a blanket, or eat out of the dumpster in the back of an alley because they didn't have the money to purchase something to eat. I remind you of JFK, and I quote, "Those who do not allow peaceful revolution to exist make true revolution inevitable. Like a pebble cast into a pool that creates a wave, each act of brutality and force inflicted by EPD and yourselves is creating a tsunami of devastating proportions. Like Legion, we are many. There are more of us than there are of you. We cannot be silenced, and we cannot be stopped. Each camp you shut down, two more will pop up." Please take that into consideration.
Next is Peter Griticelli, followed by Leslie Romnet.
Hey, guys. My name's Peter Griticelli, and so, yeah, I think what Jersey's talking about, you know, I was sure some of this happened in Chicago through with undercover forces. It's, yeah, hope that doesn't happen again. I don't know if you guys triggered that, probably not. Anyway, but I do appreciate the gradual reforms being proposed today in favor of the homeless. However, I know these reforms require resources, too. You know, the more reforms, the more resources it takes, right? But I think you get to a certain critical point at which if the reforms go far enough, they begin to actually yield resources rather than require them. And I'd like to suggest what these homeless villages could become and how they could provide such resources. So the homeless have largely self-managed, some orderly villages for years in our larger neighboring cities like, you know, Dignity Village, and R2D2 in Portland, Ten Cities Three and Four in Seattle. George Brown's been to visit them. I heard him give a report last year, so you guys are familiar with that. And these pilot projects have shown over the years no possibility of descending into the chaos of the Centennial Boulevard or WJ encampments. And so because these pilot projects are complete, we cannot pretend that Opportunity Village is also a pilot project, nor the rest stops or anything like that. Although small aspects, such as the composition of its border, unique Opportunity Village, ambulates the completed pilot projects closely enough that equal or superior results can be expected. It's time to complete the project, and I would like to propose that the city of Eugene grants enough land to OVE for dozens of villages for a total of thousands of people. And with the organized involvement of the unemployed and local activists, the homeless villages can easily develop into sustainable echo villages that employ tens of thousands of Eugene residents, most of whom would not necessarily live in the echo villages themselves. They can employ not just the officially unemployed part of the labor force, but also those who have given up looking for work, and those who need to be allowed to work at their own pace and their own terms. The villages would be ideally as autonomous as possible, but I would recommend that everyone who respects the ways of a village be allowed to come and go as they please, to give to the village what they wish and receive appropriately. We can expect thousands of people who subsist now largely on government and other charity to begin contributing through these villages. And I described last time that I came here, the village of Marin Alada. It's the information about that's in the packet that I emailed, the essay I emailed to all of you, and, you know, that shows an example. of you, and you know, that shows an example of what a community, what kind of economic economy can be developed, you know, from scratch, you know, from a village like in Spain which had very few resources, you know. This is the way of the future and you all, you know, you're all gonna see it eventually. You can only see perhaps glimpses of it now, but the Native Americans saw it, you know, before they were displaced by us. So we'll talk about it. I hope y'all want to talk about this kind of stuff and more.
Leslie Romette is next, followed by Conrad Barney.
Okay, there's no reason to introduce myself, because you guys all know me. Now, I've been coming to these for a long time, okay? Now, I can understand that, yeah, these rest stops, fifteen people, okay? But you guys gotta realize, there's more out there, okay? It just, we need to actually figure out how to get the situation under control. Winter's coming. I've personally worked the warming centers, and the problem is here, people don't like to camp out in the cold, the wet, the rain, and everything else. Would you guys like to? And I honestly take a quote from one of the presidents, which was our founding forefathers. "For the people and by the people." That don't mean up here or down here. It means everybody.
Next is Conrad Barney, followed by Barbara Prentice.
I am Conrad Barney. I would like to utilize some of my time to submit a four-page document to the council if I could.
Thank you.
I would like to use the rest of that time to say something a little short and sweet. Square peg, round hole. Why isn't it working? Square peg, square hole. Okay. Round peg, square hole. Interesting. Make the hole bigger. Magic.
Next is Barbara Prentice, followed by Jerry Smith.
I'm Barbara Prentice. I live in Greg Evans Ward. I've heard from the mayor and others that homelessness is a complex problem. I agree, and that is why I and many concerned citizens from the faith community, from other community organizations and businesses, have participated in creating Opportunity Village. We and you, the city councilors, are aware that this small pilot project is less than a finger in the dike. We all know that many places where the homeless have camped for a long time were cleaned up in the last months and campers were evicted. Now, some people are annoyed that homeless people are creating protest camps and coming out into the light of day. I applaud their courage and resourcefulness. For the most part, these protest camps have been well-run. Citizens have stepped up and paid for porta-potties. Leaders from the homeless community have established behavioral requirements. Speaking to someone who has stayed in these camps, he said he has gotten a good night's sleep, safe from harassment and fear of harm. Now it's time to recognize the enormity of the problem. Seven hundred and fifty-one people without a habitable space to live in the 2013 homeless count, and I think we all know that it's been stated that that's probably a large undercount. Over two months ago, the city council asked the city staff to identify sites on city property where rest stops could be established for small groups of homeless to stay for the night. I think the original list produced was in the teens, I didn't remember the exact number, and later was whittled down to possibly one trial, and that is yet to be identified and approved. This is an emergency, folks. Winter is approaching. The homeless have shown how to do it. It's time to identify city land. There are community supporters who will step up to pay for porta-potties and help manage sites, but the council has to designate city property where people can have a safe, legally entitled emergency place to sleep.
Next up is Jerry Smith, followed by Ruth Demler.
I'm Jerry Smith, MSW, retired social worker, a volunteer at First Christians Homeless Programs. I live in Councilor Taylor's district. I'm glad you're taking up these issues tonight. I don't see how I can be a speaker in several sessions, but camping is critically important. There are so many people, and they need a place to go. Your long vacant civic stadium has showers and kitchens and covered seats where people could sleep, inside programs, and if it were properly managed, it would be a great asset for the community, and standing still and rotting doesn't make any sense. What I've been asking you to do for some time now is to ask for outside help, and I'm just really pleased you're talking about a community development block grant with financing options for homeless sheltering. Sheltering's the biggest issue, and I keep pointing out that you need federal money, state money, county money, city money, E-Web money, private foundations, and corporate and individual donors to help. We can even have local fundraising to make things go. I feel hurt every Sunday morning when I watch two hundred and fifty, three hundred of our citizens coming in from various bushes and campsites, uncomfortable, haven't slept well, many of them recently moved by the police. Doesn't make any sense that we treat people like that, and I'm proud of these brave demonstrators who are no longer hiding out in our communities anymore. They were under bushes in somebody's backyard or out in watersheds where they didn't have any sanitation, and I'm pretty irritated at the county hearing where they had the public health officer write a really bad report about the campers saying one that they smelled bad, not noticing that they had...
Thank you.
They had porta-potties.
Thank you.
And saying over and over again that they're a threat, which they are not.
Next up is Ruth Demler. Thank you, Jerry. Ruth Demler, followed by Dana Thrift.
I'm Ruth Demler, Allen Sonwakus Ward. I've been doing this for a long time. I remember coming here when we had the Homeless Action Coalition many years ago with Ward, and nothing's happened, really. We've had this Opportunity Village, and I do thank the mayor for having Home for the Holidays last year. That was such a success. But this is, every year, we have people out in the cold and the rain, people who are disabled. I see them under bridges in their wheelchairs. Does that just twist your heart? I know last week, all of you were affected by having the woman come here, her name was Sandy Botaford, and I appreciate all these wonderful articles in the RG, but when she came and spoke, or was with her son who spoke, it pointed out the great need we have for a shelter, more than just a tent. The cutting of the shelter, the cuts that were made in the shelter care were really, in no way are they excusable. Our community can't afford to support shelter care, to put disabled people and people in wheelchairs in some solid form of shelter. And I'm just really disheartened to see that there are more and more people who are facing this problem, who have no place to really go in the winter time as it approaches. I would like to suggest that we have instead of Home for the Holidays by the mayor, if all of you could participate and have a Home for the Holidays, but have it escalated in time and start a fundraising so that we can have more money going towards shelter care and then also allow for the rest stops. They're a necessity today. We must have them. These maps, you've seen maps that I've provided you from Joe, Joe Kosowick, he produces them. These are maps that show that we have here in Oregon, eight hundred and eleven thousand people getting food stamps. We have more women than men getting, not more women than men, but many women, and more women in our county that are getting than any other part of Oregon, getting food stamps, especially women with children. And these are maps that show where the food stamps are throughout the state, where women supply them, when elderly women, when men who are supporting a family have food stamps. And I thought I would bring them and give them to you. I urge you to work quickly and to form some way to have a spirit of Home for the Holidays.
Dana Thrift is next, followed by Ally Valkyrie.
My name is Dana Thrift, and I'm ashamed of our community letting this suffering go on, pointing to the effect of current policies to judge our disabled elderly and vets, making excuses for why we're failing as a human family to care for our most vulnerable. I understand this council's fears based on past homeless camps and stereotypes, but my hope is for you to use your experience to create something different. Please, make at least several rest sites. If you pile everyone up in a single site, the problems of too many people in too little space will arise with any group. Different people have different needs, and separate spaces relieves that problem. Give people some dignity through the right to self-govern, and you will be surprised at the positive effects. Don't point at the problems you always have had as a reason to punish whole camps, and instead recognize that through self-governing, people who would otherwise be going unprotected are finding help. We have laws to deal with specific problems, so use them. The emergency isn't that the problem is in your face in the camps. The emergency is that even worse conditions are forced on our homeless every day, all over our city. Place a moratorium on ticketing campers because winter coming is an emergency for those without shelter. Work on real solutions instead of spending the same or more money squashing the voices of those using the only means that they can figure out to be heard. Our homeless are trying to tell us they don't want to face another winter without the right to have a legal place to sleep, and our city's response is to criminalize them for believing in the principles we all say we're proud to be about. How do you think freedoms were attained in this country? Certainly by sterner means than chalk on a window. You must support our freedom and human rights on a local level because the federal government is only concerned with rich people getting richer, while the poor are getting poorer. Sorry, but as our local leaders, it's in your hands to deal with the results of the tyranny that we can all see is taking over our country. Start making decisions based on the ideals you swore to uphold. It seems that we're at a crossroad where Eugene can live up to its claim to be a humanitarian city or not. If you aren't, have the decency to take the lie off the books and admit that you're part of the increasingly evil regime using poverty as its excuse, its excuse for discrimination this time.
Ally Valkyrie is next, followed by Helen Shepherd.
Ally Valkyrie, I'd like to start with a set of instructions I found. Lay flat to dry before folding or packing. Do not fold or pack if wet. These instructions came from the tag on the inside of my tent. Have any of you camped in the rain? If you have, I'm sure you know that the only thing worse than sleeping in a tent in the rain is the dilemma you're faced with in the morning. You can't pack it away wet. If you do, mold and mildew will grow in a few hours, and the moisture eats away at the seam sealant. We're in a city where it rains for six months straight. It's gonna start raining about two weeks, and you've got a proposal on the table that calls for people to pack up their tents at seven in the morning every day. You're creating a health and safety risk with this policy. You want someone to pack their wet tent, carry it around with them in the rain all day, and then put it up again every night? The tent will be ruined. People will be breathing in mold and mildew. The tents will rot away. This makes absolutely no sense whatsoever from a public health and safety perspective, and what's it gonna look like showing up at that job interview with a soaking wet tent on your back? There's the sentiment that camps don't work and that they've been tried here before and they failed, so we possibly can't try it again. This sentiment was reinforced by Sunday's Register Guard article, which stated that the Otzen Camp was closed due to violence and conflicts. But that's not the truth. I just spent the afternoon reading the Register Guard's news archives, as well as archive city council minutes. The camp actually was successful. In a report from Whitebird presented to the city council in 1994, it states the following, quote, "The camp was generally orderly, decently maintained, and created little to no problems for its neighbors, the police, or the community. The great majority of campers were responsible, cooperative, and simply grateful for a safe place with minimal amenities." It goes on. "A total of nineteen campers, six percent of the three hundred and twenty people who stayed here this past season, were evicted for violent and aggressive behavior or continued violations of the ground rules." That's a ninety-four percent success rate. The camp ran just fine. It was closed due to disagreements between the city and the Whitebird over staffing, location, and whether it should be year-round or not. It was not closed due to violence and safety reasons, and anyone telling you otherwise is mythologizing history in a negative light and perpetuating stereotypes against the homeless. Camps work. They especially work if they're small and self-managed with oversight. There's camps all over the United States that prove this very fact. What's not working is what we have now. I'm asking you to vote against your proposal. It's doomed to fail. It's destined to fail. It's not going to work. One site for fifteen people is akin to waving a loaf of bread in front of a mob of starving people. I ask you to go back to your original concept of eight to ten sites. These camps must be twenty-four hours. Fifteen to thirty people a site, let them run twenty-four hours. Take Whoville as your first experiment because it's been running successfully for a month. I invite you all to Whoville. It's a beautiful thing. Please do the right thing. Winter is coming.
Helen Shepherd is next, followed by Eric Stanton.
Hi, I'm Helen Shepherd. I am in Ward Seven. I have been a resident of Eugene my entire life, and as a taxpayer for the past decade, I want to say that I am disappointed to see my tax money being used for unproductive, irresponsible, and ultimately cruel expenditures, such as fencing off public property and the mass police strikes targeting the homeless. I would much rather see it spent productively and efficiently on things like public toilets and trash cans. I also want to ask you to please designate various public properties that are currently vacant to have self-regulated twenty-four-hour homeless camps. I believe very strongly, and with evidence from around the country and our experiences here, that this is not only productive and cost-efficient to give people a place to stay and throw away their trash and a toilet, but it is also kind-hearted. It is a nice thing to do. I know that one concern with having various camps is that the neighbors may complain, but as you seem to have gotten in your emails, as I've read in the Register Guard and heard stories, the neighbors of the Whoville camps have been very happy with the camp, and I'm confident that with patience and time, other neighbors will see these camps as a public asset as well. I hope that we can put a moratorium on tickets for sleeping, and I say these things, not only because I believe in efficiency and productivity, as I said, but because I know that you will feel really good after you help people. Helping people is really great, and I think that it would be a significant thing for the city council to do. It is a great opportunity that you have now, and I hope that you will use it wisely. Thank you.
Eric Stanton is next, followed by Majeska C. Green.
Yes, my name is Eric Stanton. I've lived in this town for twenty-five years. I've seen a lot of things happen. I've seen the economy go to the toilet in the last five years. It is getting better, but it's caused numerous people to lose their homes. I consider it a disaster. I consider it a disaster. What happened in Colorado, if something like what happened in Colorado with all the floods happened here and thousands of people lost their homes, or if there was a big wildfire in the South Hills and people lost their homes, I'm sure you guys would have shelter for them immediately. Well, it's the same thing here. It's an economic disaster. People who have lost their homes and lost their jobs, have been laid off and had their hours cut, including me, are not criminals. I have lived in this city for twenty-five years and I feel that, I mean, I may be losing my home soon because my hours have been cut at my work and I'm going to have to leave this community. And that breaks my heart because I've lived here for twenty-five years and I feel like I'm going to be forced out if I lose my home through no fault of my own. We are not criminals. People are struggling and this police harassment has to stop because people who lose their home and are down on their luck are not criminals. One more thing, my hometown has a very good shelter program where they rent out large warehouses. In this place, it's the fairgrounds. I mean, I understand the fairgrounds here are probably too small for that, but there's large warehouses where people sleep and there is security around the clock, twenty-four hour hired security firms that keep things in order so it doesn't turn out like the Occupy Camp happened like, you know, a couple of years ago. So there's no violence there, there's no alcohol, it's not tolerated there. But people who are looking to better their lives have a safe, dry place to sleep in large warehouses that are rented out. In this case, it's the exhibit halls of the California State Fairgrounds. And I think that would work if we could find a large enough space here. Just remember, we're not criminals here. We're just trying to live. It's wrong to ticket someone and punish them for being down on their luck. Thank you for your time.
Majeska C. Green is next, followed by what looks like Tuck Swords.
Hello, Majeska C. Green, Ward Seven. First, just one remark from myself personally before I make one for my organization. I really appreciate all the comments that we've heard and really hope that you take them to heart. And I myself really don't want Eugene to be a city with a sun-up seven AM law. Now, a comment for my little, the little nonprofit that some of you have heard of called ACT or A Community Together, ACT Two if you're keeping track, which focuses a lot on civic engagement and public processes, especially on difficult topics. So addressing some of the things in the ordinance that you are considering. First of all, we do really support making permanent, including the huts and the tents, and increasing the number three to six for vehicles. But the main thing that I want to talk about is the Section B in the ordinance before you. There's an edit in Section A and one in Section C, but no proposed changes in Section B. And B happens to be the one about camping in backyards. I don't believe that you should include this paragraph. I believe you should delete it. It would still, of course, be there in city code. I looked up the AIS for the public hearing last year, February 21st of last year, when you had the same permitted overnight sleeping ordinance before you, and it included paragraph A and C. It skipped over B. So I believe that you could follow that same pattern here and remove B from what you're deliberating on. The reason that I think you should delete it is that, first of all, it wasn't included at all in the poll from which you've had these series of sessions. That poll was about public property, not private property. Second, the council has really had no discussion of that at all yet. And it needs to have public process and discussion, maybe some improvements and some edits in that section. But I don't want us to end up hearing later in a few months if Counselor Clark's motion that was passed and that I understand staff is going to bring you some sort of proposal about next week. I don't want us to end up hearing, well, we can't make any edits in that section. So thanks.
Next up is Tuck Swords. And then I've got what looks like John R. something.
Hello, my name is Tuck Swords. I'm a certified professional midwife. I volunteer with Occupy Medical and I'm in Betty Taylor's district. I wanted to say just a couple of things about sleep deprivation. Access to a safe, legal place to sleep is a public health issue. We're in the middle of a public health crisis. Sleep deprivation worsens pre-existing mental health issues. It's connected to diabetes, obesity, high blood pressure, increased stress hormones, fibromyalgia. Imagine you're a person dealing with post-traumatic stress disorder. Imagine you're a person dealing with addiction and then add in chronic sleep deprivation to that. This is one of the ways that being unhoused negatively affects health. I'm not even going to touch on how at risk for violence people who are pushed into the shadows are. Human lives aren't expendable and we don't get to pick and choose who's deserving of safety. Everyone is. Fifteen spots, it's not enough. Seven AM, it's not going to work for this community. You wonder what to do? I want to urge you to listen to the people that are here, the people that are living this reality every day. They know what they need and they're asking for it. That's huge. Make more than one camp, keep it open twenty-four hours, and stop ticketing people for needing to sleep. That need's not going to go away. Thank you.
So John R... Can I read the last name? A John R. something? What number was it? It is number twenty... Okay, well, maybe it'll come back. I'll just put it aside here. Art Bowman is next, followed by Joe Tindall.
Art Bowman, we've been doing this for a long time, haven't we? I think I remember saying six months ago that I was tired of talking to it and I imagined you were tired of listening to me. Six more months have gone by and we're all a lot more tired. I remember reading a quote from a lieutenant in your police force saying that he thought that the enactment had led to louder voices having more influence within the sleeps movement. I think it might also have led to louder voices or more hostile voices having influence within your own police department, judging by some of the incidents we've seen this week. Nobody wanted to see those things happen and activists should have been trained to be able to deal more effectively with police provocation. But there was an element of police provocation. I'm hearing a sense from these that for some reason, this situation, which has been growing and not being acted on, is now being viewed as an emergency. And I think you might want to look at that. Jean Stacey compared this to, said this was Eugene's Birmingham moment. There's a danger that it might be, on a smaller scale, a Watts movement. When things should be getting better, but improvement is too slow, that's when you experience the sort of turbulence we've seen in the past week, both at this council meeting and with what should have been a routine arrest later that week. Things didn't go that, the way they've been expected, but then a lot of things haven't gone the way that we expected them to this century. It's a good thing we only have eighty-seven years to go, but I don't think we have eighty-seven years to go on this issue. We might not even have eighty-seven days. I'm urging you to deal with this more aggressively than this proposal is, but something needs to be done. We all know it happens to a dream tonight. Thank you.
Joe Tindall is next, followed by De Maria.
Hello, my name's Joe Tindall. First, I just pedaled a bicycle twenty-two hundred and nineteen miles from Canada to Mexico. Fabulous trip, highly recommended. Second, I visited Opportunity Village. I am pleased that it's finally open. However, at forty residents, given the ten thousand homeless in the area, this constitutes only a zero-point-four percent solution. Must be replicated two-hundred-and-fifty times to fix the problem. The OVE structures cost eleven hundred dollars each for materials, not included toilets, kitchens, showers, or common areas, raising the per-person expense above two thousand dollars. Solving homelessness with this cost model requires twenty million dollars and two-hundred-and-fifty acres of land. These numbers are prohibitive. Thus, nine thousand nine hundred and sixty people have been left in the cold and rain. There are alternative, higher-density, lower-cost approaches. We spend several million dollars every year on police to chase the homeless from public and private property, a strategy clearly not working. The current proposals, like everything else now being done, are a Band-Aid, often a very expensive Band-Aid, to cover a severed artery. At the police commission meeting, I again heard the stock line, "The homeless are there by choice." Our schools report more than eighteen hundred homeless students. Are these children living in the woods by choice? Mommy, mommy, can we please be homeless and live in the rain and cold and be sick most of the time? I like it when the police make us move along and my toys are thrown in a dumpster. Mommy, mommy, can we please be homeless? Somehow, I don't think that gets said very often. Let's punish the kids because their mothers had sex, or the mentally ill who have trouble understanding what their shoes are for, or kids who left their families to end beatings and molestation. They made a choice. Let's punish all of them because they might be lazy, obnoxious, or self-medicate. I get it. Another standard line, "It's about behavior." That is true. Criminalizing people and they will become hostile. Make the unhoused, sleep-deprived, cold, wet, sick, hungry, angry, desperate, and when survival is on the line, theft or other crime becomes an attractive option. The chief reports the police, the police calls are up by fifteen percent this year. If you actually want to reduce crime, get the nine thousand nine hundred and sixty people a place to legally exist twenty-four seven without making them pack and haul their stuff every day. Thank you.
De Maria? Followed by Pauline, and I can't read the last name.
My name is... Is this working? Yes. My name's Mariah and I have lived in this neighborhood for two years, so I don't know which of you are my representative. I came to Eugene thirty-six years ago with two young children. And when I got here, the money that was to have been sent for child support wasn't there. I was very grateful to find Family Shelter House. They saved us from being homeless and I volunteered and was hired there, went on from there to work at Whitebird and volunteer at other private nonprofit agencies. Got my master's degree in eighty-nine. So I'm a retired social worker who has known homelessness. And I know all of you are good people. I know, I am so impressed with the people of sleeps. I can't help but smile every time I go by one of their camps. They are so courageous and so amazing to me. When I came here in seventy-seven, I didn't, I'd never heard of a shelter. I've never heard of anybody doing anything about the homeless. When I was impressed, the rest of the staff would say, "Well, surely they have something like that in Chicago." And I said, "No, they don't." They couldn't believe what happened to homeless people. We're talking nineteen-seventy-seven. In Chicago, people died who were homeless. And I don't know what they're doing now. I'm not privy to that. Maybe they're doing better than we are. We didn't have waiting lists for shelter in nineteen-seventy-seven. We always had a place for a family who was in need or a mentally ill, single adult. We always had room. And sometimes we had more than one room. To find my city in the condition it's in now, which I think in many ways is worse than Chicago was then, is appalling to me. I don't know what's missing. I don't know why we're not solving this problem. I know we're trying. I know all of you are trying and the problem is enormous. But the more we try to do, the less, the smaller the percentage of the problem gets addressed. And part of me, part of me wants to tell you what it's like. I agree, everybody, everything I was going to say has already been said. But think about what the homeless deal with every day.
Is there a Paulina? Okay. Tell me what your last name is and I'll write it in here. Just say it neat. When you speak, just introduce yourself.
My name is Pauline Rugani. So I have a solution. We all have these people buy quarter-million-dollar Monaco Coach campers and they can park free at Valley River Center. Nobody will notice them. It's okay on the Friday night before a game and on game day, they can frolic and tailgate and the day after the game, they're still there sleeping off. And I can almost guarantee that the cops are not going to be there harassing you. So what can the city say to justify the difference in the treatment of these two groups of people? What's the difference here? They're doing the exact same thing, camping in the streets. For the rich, it's okay. For the poor, it's not. The amount of money that was spent building steel barricades under the Viaducts and the overpasses on Goldberg Road would have provided nice housing for a large number of individuals. Mr. Alan Zelenka, the article in yesterday's paper quoted you as saying, "We need to take our time here and go slow. This problem wasn't created yesterday, so we don't have to find a solution tomorrow." You're absolutely right. I've lived in this community for thirty-five years and this problem existed in this community when I moved here. So how much more time do you need? Do we just toll one season at a time so we don't have to deal with it for the rest of this time and ignore it until it's on our backs because winter is coming once again? I'd like to recommend that every member sitting at this tables, take a night and spend in the mission. Sleep on the streets and see what it feels like. It's cold, it's wet, and it's scary. And it's been mentioned that these people are drug addicts and alcoholics. If I had to sleep out in the streets, I'd probably be taking alcohol too, just to be able to get a decent night's sleep. We need to pull together as a community. Even alcoholics and addicts and mentally ill people need a place to sleep. We've got a beautiful facility on Blamette that people keep fighting over for how many years now? If we could pull together as a community with the city council working with the school district and asking people, like Fred Meyer had an interest in it, Mr. Wright from PC Market had an interest in it, ask even Phil Knight, who's a very philanthropic and giving individual, Rowley, Lions Clubs, business clubs, retired professionals, pull together and create an after-school place for children to go so kids can study. How can they get educations when they can't even get a decent night's sleep? Start a mentoring program where you can get volunteers to take a kid to work, to provide sports and arts and music. And most of all, provide a place for people to sleep. And you have to do it more than fifteen at a time because there are many more than fifteen people out there needing to sleep. And by the way, stop offering three and a half million dollar tax deferments to wealthy Californian developers to come here and build high-rise, expensive houses or apartments. Spend some of that money for the poor.
Good evening. I'm Jean Stacey from various wards. I wanted to talk a little bit tonight about peer pressure. I've had the good fortune, and you've been kind enough to open your offices to me, to talk to me over the last two years about these homeless issues, and you're all as concerned or more concerned than I am. And all of you in your lifetime have done more than I've done. But we're all perplexed and we're all stymied by peer pressure. I remember when I was a kid and I would say, "But Mom, my friends said we could do this." And they said, she said, "Jean, if your friends told you to leap off a cliff, would you do it?" All of you have told me what enormous amounts of peer pressure you're getting from your constituents. I want to point out- I want to point out to you tonight, they're not here to speak out in public. They will not say to you in public the things they say to you behind clients' doors, because they know it's wrong. I also want to talk to you about how much, as a child of the South, I loved the status quo, because I was part of the powerful white structure, just as you are part of the power structure here. And I want to tell you, I didn't sense when the black people could no longer afford to take it, when we had pushed them past survival. I've been working on the streets for two years now, volunteer. Things have changed. We are at that Birmingham moment. They cannot afford to back down. That concerted sweep of all the governments at one time? Let them know there was no other way to cope but to stand up for their rights. We have the moral obligation to do it. And you cannot let peer pressure bring about the nasty police actions that happened over race issues in the South. They're going to happen over our homeless issues. I can't stop it. You can. By changing the policies, stop punishing people, honor the Constitution, honor people, do what you want to do despite what your peers are pressuring you to do. Thank you.
Michael Gannon, followed by Donna Grant.
Good evening. I'm Michael Gannon. I've lived in Eugene for quite a while. I came here more than 50 years ago to enroll at the University of Oregon. And I'm sort of reflecting on that at my age, and I'm thinking about some of the things that have happened since then, and how frequently they seem to have been a lack of courage by the Eugene City Council. I was involved in the trying to establish a nuclear-free zone in Eugene. And we eventually established one after vigorous battles with the forces against it. But I can imagine that if we interviewed the population in the region around Fukushima, we would not find very many who regretted that they didn't have a vigorous discussion about nuclear radiation and its results. There was a small group of people who persuaded EWEB to give up the plan to invest in a nuclear power plant between here and Lebanon, just alongside Interstate 5. There was another small group that persuaded the city council to tear up the downtown area. And 40 years later, we're seeing it revived, because that was a really bad idea. And it was fostered upon the city by people who had strong, developed interests at heart. One of the things we're seeing happening around the city right now is a tremendous investment in the automobile system. Everybody going to sleep outside walks by fancy equipment, putting multiple layers of concrete and asphalt and gravel, in some places, much more elaborate than ever before. And at the very time-- and we're all aware of climate change and global warming and the role that the automobile plays in making the air hazardous to the future of the planet. In the meantime, we have a lot of vibrant human beings struggling to cope with the injuries of this society that is corrupt and is showing a lot of signs of blowing apart. And we have, in fact, in the midst of all of this, found some safe places to sleep in spite of all of the efforts you have made to stop it from happening. And we can recall that there were similar camps on what should be Monument Grounds and just before Roosevelt took office in 1933.
Donna Grant.
Hi. My name is Donna Grant. I'm a registered nurse here in Oregon, and I'm a volunteer for Occupy Medical. Forgive me if I ramble, I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. From everything that I've heard here, I can't disagree with anything that I've heard. I can tell you, I take care of people every week with physical disabilities. I take care of women, babies. I've got three babies on the way this winter. There are people that are women that are homeless right now. I can tell you, the mission is full, shelter care is full. I can tell you, Kahoots brings those patients instead of taking them to the hospital for better care. There is nowhere for these people to go. From a medical perspective, I can tell you, they are already suffering from exhaustion, malnutrition, and exposure. I would invite any of you to come down to my medical tent on any Sunday and sit there with me and listen to these stories. And I will show you feet that you can even believe people are walking on, much less having to get up and get out of warming centers at 7:00 AM in the morning. To not allow people to sleep or stop or rest, there is no humanity there. And quite frankly, you would be ostracized. People treat stray dogs better than that. There's more kindness, for some unknown reason. But I can tell you, if we continue to ignore this problem, the tension is building. There was an incredible incident on Sunday, just due to the tension on the street. And if we do not act, there is a perfect storm brewing for this entire community. This will be a community health care crisis if you do not get on it. And I do not believe I'm exaggerating. It is in everyone's best interest for all of us to act, act boldly. And please do this, because I do believe this is a life-and-death matter. And I do know that at least two of our patients in the last nine months have died on the street. One in an alley and one by the river. So I implore you to please do something. There's a lot of passion out there, and we're a very bright and bold community, and we can show the way to make this work. So please. Thank you for letting me speak.
To close the hearing, and thank each and every one of your very eloquent comments. And I'll ask if council has any comments they would like to make.
I don't have a comment, more of a question. I want to go back to Mr. Stanton's testimony and ask staff, what is our emergency preparedness plan? So if we had a natural disaster in this community, where would people go? What will we do? Where would they be placed?
You know, I'd have to get back to you. I don't know the details of the plan that would specifically outline where that is. We'd be happy to send you a copy of the plan, though.
I appreciate that. Thanks, John.
Counselor Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, everyone, for coming down. I am kind of skeptical about the ordinance that will be asked to vote on. I think it doesn't go nearly far enough. It's sort of way too few people. I do understand the concept of, you know, small pilot program, and if that works, then you replicate it. But there are some features about the program that I'm afraid that could possibly structure it so as to fail. I see big-time problems with the lottery every night, 15 people, what, you have to spin the cage, and if your lucky number comes up, wow, great, you get to go in. Hey, you gotta be out by 7:00 in the morning, you gotta take all your stuff, and then resubmit in the lottery. Next tramp, all the way across town with your gear, come back, resubmit to the lottery. I see that as a really big problem, when you may have 50 to 100 people showing up to, you know, use the facility. And if there's no responsible host and a gatekeeper who will make sure that the people are compatible, who are, you know, the lucky 15, who will get in, I see some big-time problems with it. You know, St. Vincent de Paul's Rest Station, that's a lottery too. But if you're one of the lucky ones that get in, you get to keep your stuff there for 30 days. So that adds an element of certainty in a life that's full of uncertainty and anxiety. Where will I stay tonight that's safe and dry? And any way we can reduce that level of anxiety, I think will be good. And I have some serious reservations about this program that we're working on right now. Thanks.
Hester Fryer?
Thank you. I very much appreciate being here tonight and hearing everybody. I was not able to be here last Monday. And although I did watch the cast and read the story, there is no substitute for actually hearing people. And I do appreciate the passion. There is an enormous amount of passion, and I hear that very clearly. In the event of a natural disaster, there's an entire mechanism that does go into place. It would involve a number of public buildings. It would involve the American Red Cross, CERT, a variety of different organizations. It also would be declared a disaster, which makes it available for a variety of federal money. There's literally millions of dollars that can be brought into the community to deal with a natural disaster that unfortunately would not be able to be there to deal with the homeless situation, which many people would consider a disaster, but not by the definition that gets all that federal money. There is an entire plan in place. School buildings would be used, people would be mobilized, tents would be set up. Things are in place to happen. None of that is available unless it is a defined national disaster. So you can't make an apples-to-apples comparison. Doesn't mean there's not a problem. It just means we are left with having to deal with this problem on our own. And so the solution that we put in place is one that has to be homegrown, home-financed, home-created. Doesn't mean it can't be done, but it requires an incredible amount of intelligence, and it requires the time to be able to do it effectively. We have been working to move in that direction. I've been working to move in that direction. I know we're not moving as fast as folks would like for us to move. We're moving as fast as we're comfortable moving, and at least we are moving. And I hear, I absolutely hear, we're not moving fast enough. We're moving, at least in the right direction. Everybody here, as you say, does want to do something about this. Incrementally, I think we can get there. But we want to work with you to make that happen. And we want to do it in a thoughtful, deliberate, respectful, and effective way. This isn't going to be magic. There is no magic solution. We're just stuck with us. We'll do the best we can. We'll do it as quickly as we're comfortable doing it. We'll mobilize whatever resources we have available, but they are limited. They're whatever resources we have. We can't call on the feds for money. We can't call on the state for money. We have to just try to solve this problem ourselves. I think we can get there, but it's going to take more time than you want, more time than I want. But the best solution is the one that we just keep moving toward. And that's all I can offer you. But I will not lie to you and tell you I'm going to fix your problem tomorrow. But I also won't lie to you and say I don't care. I do, and I will help every way I can.
Counselor Zelenka?
So we've heard what you've been saying, and we actually have been doing quite a bit. And as evidenced by the Provider Panel, we had two meetings ago, the long laundry list of stuff we've been doing over the last year seems that there's also-- and we've had a lot of communications with folks about the homeless issue. And there seems to be a whole group of people that want to have this tendency to lump all homeless people together. But the face of homelessness is really much more complex than that. Most homeless people are actually working-class people that have lost their jobs and their homes. And they're part of that many, many people that are working one paycheck away from being homeless. And now they live in their cars. And others are mentally ill veterans that have fought for our country. And many are just innocent children. And many have lived in Eugene their whole lives. It's a whole mix of people. It's varied, and it's complex. And the people protesting are only a segment of that homeless population. And they shouldn't be all lumped together. But they're all human beings, and they're all Eugenians. They're all moms and dads and sons and daughters, and they all deserve respect, and they deserve a helping hand from our community to get them back on their feet and gain some stability. And if your answer to the question is, "What should we do for these people," is nothing, I disagree with that. And I think everybody up here disagrees with that. We're a better community than that. However, the problem of homelessness has been around for a long, long time. We have been talking about this for a long time. We've been doing stuff for a long time. I've been working on this for 25 years. I want to solve this problem. There are thousands of homeless in our community. It's gotten worse over this awful recession. And we've been in our community, and they've been in our community for years. But now you've made yourself visible and made us respond. And for that, my hat's off to you. But you can't expect us to solve this problem overnight. Again, we heard what you're saying, and there's lots of people that don't want us to do anything. And they fear we're the worst outcomes. And we need to show them that this can work. But we need to start somewhere. We need to start small, and we need to grow it. And what we have done is proposed two pilot programs, one for camping and one for sleeping. Let's try them out, see how they work. And if they work, we can expand them. To address the camping issue, we set up the Opportunity Village with one single site with 30 sites as a pilot program. To address the sleeping, we're proposing a rest stop for 15 people. Of course, it's not enough, but it's a start. Let's make it work, and let's build off of it. And every journey starts with a single step. And this is, these are two really good first steps.
Counselor Soret?
Thank you. Thank you, everyone, who came to speak. I appreciate the testimony, and especially those of you who made specific comments about the proposal that the public hearing was about. You know, there's criticism of certain models, how much they'll cost, how many people they're served. No model is going to serve the needs of everyone that is out there. Everyone has particular needs that they need filled. But we have to try different models to get at something, to assist some of the people. You know, Ali Valkyrie talked about this proposal would create new health and safety problems. That's a real concern, and that's part of what's stymied some of our actions, is we don't want to create a new model that's going to then just result in different health and safety problems in another location, with now the city council's go-ahead. So that's a real concern that we are thinking about as we think about different ways to approach this crisis. So I, for one, will take the input that we received and see if during council deliberations we can make some changes to this one proposal, this one small step, to create some relief. I really appreciate the suggestions about calling upon the great creativity and compassion that we know exists in this community, both among the housed and the unhoused, people who want to help and make this work. So those will definitely be in the forefront of our minds as we think about what we are going to do next. But I really see even this proposal as a very stopgap, temporary measure while we keep working for something more long-term. We can't have people living permanently in camps. That's not a solution. So thank you.
Counselor Clark?
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it very much. Appreciate hearing people's testimony tonight. I'm struck by what Counselor Soret just said. I agree with her. I think that I'm looking forward very much to the staff's proposal and information that they'll bring back to us shortly on the motion that I made. I, with regard to this ordinance specifically, I have some real concerns with the way it's written, and I'm undecided on supporting it or not at this time. But I'm looking forward to that future discussion, because as is mentioned, and as I think Alan said as well, this is a community that cares, in greater proportion, I think, than many. And that's the great untapped resource that we have available to us. And I, for one, don't think we're using anywhere a fraction of the great support we have amongst folks in our community to help. And I'd like to see us do more to leverage that. Thank you.
Counselor Taylor?
Thank you. Thanks to all of you who spoke. I think the ordinance before us should be changed, that we should not ask people to move every day, every morning. I think we should definitely change it to 24 hours. And I'm hoping and thinking that people from the community will volunteer to provide sanitary facilities, garbage cans, and so forth. But I think that what we need to do-- But I think that what we need to do is provide more than one place and let people stay 24 hours. I think the next thing we need to do, we give you the place, and the volunteers figure out how to get the people into it and what to do. If that's legal, I would like to put opinion from our attorney of whether it would be legal for us to turn over spots to the volunteers to run.
There would be a way to work that out, so yes. If the council gave that direction.
Thank you. And I think that's what we need to find, a number of different places where there could be 15 people in each place and for 24 hours a day. Thank you.
Just a couple comments before we wrap this up and get on to our next item. I think it's really important for council to figure out, both in the short run and the long run, where they want to go. So in the short run, you have before you kind of an, what are we going to do this year, this winter, for a whole lot of people? And that's a question. And we either have to say, we're going to try something, or we have to say, we're not, and we're only going to do the pieces that we think we have the ability to do. But somehow, we have to really make clear where it is we're going, both in the short run and the long run. And I do think that we need to bring, and Councilor Saret did a very nice job of articulating that in a communication earlier. This is not something that can or should be solved by the Eugene City Council. There are many parts of this community, and they need to be engaged in this discussion together. There's other cities. There's county. There's all kinds of folks that have resources to bring. And we haven't even begun the journey to see what kind of conversation we can have. If we had something that we knew we really wanted and were clear about, we could, in the long run, go to the legislature and ask for assistance. When we do our united front trip to the federal government, we could go and take requests there. There are things we can do if we know where it is we're going and what we're trying to accomplish in the short and the long run. I guess the part that bothers me the most, and I've said it in the paper, so I think everybody knows it, is you can't just tell people where they can't be and not tell them where they can be. And the place that we are right now is we've told a lot of people where they can't be, but we haven't told them where they can be. And what they're saying to us tonight is, okay, we're fine with testing out a rest stop, but what about the rest of us in the meantime? And that's the challenge that you have in front of you. What about the rest of them? Is there anything that we can come up with to give some relief through this season? And is that your desire and intention? So I think we really have to focus in on this. Chris is going to bring forward the long-awaited for commission-
Council Committee.
Council Committee. And I think they can work on the long-term stuff. But the other stuff is right in front of our noses. And I really ask you to go home and think hard about it, because I think we have our meeting on the 26th at our meeting that we make this decision.
I'm sorry.
At any rate, I think when we get to that meeting, we really need to focus hard on what it is we're going to try to accomplish and how we're going to get there. I just ask you to join in that effort, and I know everybody out here would like to join in that effort also. So thank you all for being here. All right. Going to move on to the next thing. So we have a work session on Civic Stadium. This has been requested by Councilor Brown and Councilor Evans. And unless the city manager has something he wants to say, I'm going to turn it over to them to sort of lead this discussion.
That'd be fine. At some point, Glenn sent out some information that he can also just briefly review for the public forum as well.
Mayor and council, you should have at your places an email from me that answers four questions, and I'll just go over it real quickly. The first question that was asked is whether the city could use park bond money to purchase Civic Stadium. The answer to that question is yes, as long as it's being used to purchase Civic Stadium as parkland. The next question is, could you use the money to both purchase and renovate Civic Stadium? The answer to that question is no. You can use the park bond money to purchase. You would have to come up with other money to actually do the renovation. The park bond money, the park bond measure specified construction, development of certain sports fields, something at Golden Gardens, the West Eugene Wetland Center, but that's the only part that the bond measure said could be used to develop. The third question is, if you use park bond money to purchase Civic Stadium, could the city then lawfully lease the property to a semi-pro soccer team? The answer to that question is no. In order to use park bond money, it has to be used to purchase parkland. If you turn around and lease the property to a semi-pro soccer team, it's no longer city parkland, effectively. And then the last question is, what would the breakdown be between North and South Eugene in terms of city parkland? Since there isn't a real dividing line between North and South Eugene, what city staff did was to answer that question for me by saying, if North Eugene consists of wards four, five, six, and seven, South Eugene are the other four wards, then North Eugene would have approximately 1,400 acres of parkland. That's both developed and undeveloped. South Eugene would have about 2,700 acres.
Thank you for that. Okay? So you're going to head off?
Well, I just have a question regarding what the city attorney just said. So going back to the options of using the park bond funds, I think maybe a fourth question would be, could the city buy that property from 4J and sell it later to another party if it was to be used for recreation? And, you know, it would be a public, kind of like PG&E Park in Portland, well, it's still Duane Field now. The city still owns that, but they lease it to, the Timbers, you know, pay ground rent and then a percentage of their ticket sales. Of course, it's not, they probably didn't use park bond funds to create the facility.
Correct. Could the city use park bond money to purchase and then later sell? I would want to double-check with bond counsel, but I believe the answer is probably yes. The money that the city received in selling that parkland would have to then be used the same way that the park bond money would have to be used.
I see. That makes sense.
But I'd want to double-check.
Of course. Sure. Okay, and then one other little sub-question regarding that. What is the difference between, say, Alton Baker Park with Cuthbert Auditorium, which I'm not sure how that works with Kezzi Entertainment? Do they lease that? Do they pay a ground lease to the city? That's in a parkland.
My understanding is, well, a couple things. First, the restriction here is because we're talking about a specific bond measure-
Right.
-that limited how the bond proceeds could be used.
I see.
I'm not sure how the city acquired Cuthbert.
I see.
In terms of Cuthbert, I believe the city has an operating agreement. It's not a ground lease.
I see.
But again, I'd have to double-check to let you know for sure.
Very good. Thanks.
Councilor Evans, you going to lead off this conversation?
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. And I want to acknowledge that Councilor Brown is my partner in crime in kind of crafting what I'm going to propose next. And what I'd like to do is to, you know, just frame what I'm getting ready to do in terms of a motion by saying this, is that I think all of us on this dais have had considerable input from the community about Civic Stadium and maintaining that as a public resource in some form or fashion. I'm not suggesting any specific strategy for that purpose, but that we begin to have a conversation about, a serious conversation about what is going to happen with it, considering that the school district is in a position now that they want to take some significant action around that. So with that in mind, I move that whereas it is a widespread community goal that, one, Civic Stadium be preserved and renovated as a historic landmark that serves as a vital center of community activity, and, two, the preservation and renovation be done with minimal or no net cost to the city, therefore, the council directs the city manager to, one, work with 4J School District and those organizations such as LANE, United FC, Save Civic, Travel LANE County, and others whose goal is preservation and renovation of Civic Stadium, to present council with alternative plans by which the community's desired goal could be achieved. Two, such plans should consider at least the following. A, rehabilitation, restoration, and maintenance as a sports and community recreational venue and city asset. B, proposals by interested parties for public-private partnership to develop and maintain the facility. C, establishment of a separate Civic Stadium authority to acquire and manage Civic Stadium property and facility. Three, such plans should include information from independent parties as well as staff on projected costs, revenues, and other benefits that would accrue to the City of Eugene for at least the following alternatives. Alternative A, permanent acquisition operations by the City of Eugene. B, permanent acquisition by the City of Eugene with leasing to other party or parties for operations. And C, interim purchase by the City of Eugene with subsequent resale to other party or parties.
The motion, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further discussion? Councilor Brown, do you want to jump in this?
Yes. Well, yes, I speak to the motion and speak to the objectives of the work session at the same time. You know, we're at a crossroads here. We're at a very serious crossroads. It's decision time. 4J is initiated, they're starting a new request for proposal process. They haven't refined at all. I went to their board meeting about three weeks ago. And so they were moving it forward, and they're hoping to make, to receive all the proposals by December 3rd, and they would make a decision a little bit later. Two and a half years ago, they received three proposals, and they rejected all three. I think for very good reasons, even though I favored the third proposal, which was by Save Civic Stadium. I think the plan needed to be a little bit better developed, and I think they were certainly right to reject the YMCA Capstone Project and the master Kroger Fred Meyer Project. I think there's a clear desire in the community that that property be preserved as public recreational space. That was its intended use. The whole town came together to make it happen, a two-to-one vote to pay the back taxes, and enormous community unification on that project. That same ballot measure, voters also approved, by two-to-one majority, the purchase of 280 acres on top of Spencer's Butte. That became the basis for the wonderful park that we have up there. Who can know what would have happened had they not done that? This was in 1938, in the middle of the Depression with a 25% unemployment rate. People voted on those two projects. My guess is Spencer's Butte would be gated communities and condos and clear cuts had they not done that. But anyway, you know, 4J is tired of dealing with it. It's not their area of expertise. Their area of expertise is educating our children and providing safe and good facilities for our children to be educated in. It's not running a sports facility. And so we're not going to be able to come up with a magic solution tonight. There's no possible way. There's an enormous amount of material to go over. I have, I've been working on this for three and a half years. I have four huge files. I've been over them several times. There's an enormous amount of research, an enormous amount of proposals and suggestions. I'll need another round.
Yeah. Councilor Saret.
Can I be in the key now?
Yes, you can.
I just erased everything I wrote to say, so hopefully I can remember it.
Why'd you do that?
Oh, you could let Chris go ahead of me so I could retype my statement.
She just crossed me off the list.
I did. I thought he, sorry, lost my hand. Sorry about that. I wonder, you're looking at me like, what?
She crossed my name off.
All right, my clock is going. Do I have the time? Am I up, Mayor Piercy?
Yeah, go ahead. Then Chris.
So I'll stumble through my comments that I just typed and then accidentally erased. So I appreciate you bringing this proposal forward. I'm eager for us to talk about it and see what might be possible. I think Civic Stadium is a historic building, not just for the City of Eugene or LANE County, but for actually the entire country. Ironically, it was created as a project of the Works Progress Administration during the Great Depression and now might be lost to us due to our current economic recession and the lack of immediate resources for us to support it or for 4J to handle it and wanting to feel like it needs to be offloaded. So I think that would be a real shame, but I recognize the challenges that we face. Because we are in this economic crisis, we have a budget shortfall, we have many challenges in terms of finding a way to preserve this landmark, but I think it's worth trying to do. In terms of the question about how parklands might be allocated across the city, again, because I think this is a national asset, not just a city asset, I would encourage us to view this park, if we were able to get to that place, as a regional asset. Because if it does evolve into some kind of athletic field, a place that hosts tournaments, it's going to be a regional draw. So I would really encourage us to not think of this as something that South Eugene's going to get. If we were able to achieve what I think is the vision of this motion, it would be an asset for the entire community, for the whole city, and draw people to our community from other places to enjoy this asset. And I also think having this open land and this recreational asset where it is located, I think is great. It's not an opportunity that comes along very often. Normally, it would be filled with other useful things, like housing. But while we have open space, I think we need to try and preserve it. So that's not exactly what I had written down, but it's pretty close.
With great apologies, I, Councilor Pryor.
Thank you. I appreciate all the thought and passion that's gone into this. Since I was on the school board for 11 years, I've been dealing with Civic Stadium now for going on almost 20 years, both as a school board member and also on and off as a city councillor. And I've seen the condition reports on it. I've talked about it as a school board member. And I can't support this at this time. I think it's way premature. And it doesn't mean we can't have conversations about it, but I'm not ready to agree to what's in this particular motion. For one thing, we're directing the city manager to start doing something with 4J. And if I were back being a school board member, my response would be, thanks, John, see you tomorrow. Unless you're bringing me your checkbook, don't start telling me what to do or what I need to do or how I need to start getting together. It's their property. It's their school board. They can do what they want with it. Unless we've got our checkbook to buy it, they're not about to let us start telling them what to do with it, whether we want to do it collaboratively or not. And so that gets to the issue of, well, are we, does this mean we're getting out our checkbook? I don't think we should be getting out our checkbook at this point. To me, Civic Stadium is not something the City of Eugene wants to become the owner of. It's not something we can afford right now. We don't really have what, to me, is a reasonable source of money to buy it. That money was intended to be for North Eugene Park property acquisition. That was back in '98. That's kind of where that piece of money was still going to be used. And I'm South Eugene councillor, but I know what that money's intention was. Civic Stadium is a giant pit into which you pour money. The school district knows that, and if we acquire it, it will be an albatross around our neck. We would come to regret it. I appreciate the ambitious plans. I think they're great plans, but they're not for the City of Eugene. They're not something we should be doing. So at this point, I would love to continue to have conversations, but I'm not ready to work on this, vote for this right now. I think it's going too far, too quickly, without sufficient conversation. So I appreciate the effort, but I can't support it at this point. So I appreciate the effort, but I can't support it at this time.
I've got Councilor Zelenka and then Councilor Clark.
So back in round one of this, back in May 2011, I was involved in an effort to save Civic. And at that point, my thinking was that we needed to have this be a business venture that at worst broke even, at best did better than that. Too many unknowns, and it was, we didn't have time. And we couldn't assure cash flow on the first day, so it fell apart. Fortunately, we were able to prevent 4J from selling the property. Since that time, my thinking has evolved about Civic, and since it's been much more at risk, especially lately, I think it is a historic structure. I think it's a valuable community asset that should be preserved, improved, and kept in public hands. We do such a poor job of preserving our history in this city, and I would hate to see this happen yet again. I think it can be an excellent Murphy multi-purpose facility and a sports venue. And we don't have anything like this in our community at all, and I think it's a real opportunity. I think the community enthusiasm and the interest hasn't waned. I think it's matured and increased. The professional soccer team has become real. They start playing next May. Unfortunately, they'll be playing in Springfield. And I think Civic could be a real, could be a city asset, and I think it should be a park. And I think differently about parks than I do about business ventures. Parks, every single park we have is actually subsidized. They all cost us money. They all have incredible public benefits that make them worth it, but they all cost us money. The two exceptions to that that don't cost us an enormous amount of money are Lowell Golf Course and the Cuthbert. They actually have revenue stream, and they cost us a lot less money because of that. And so they're probably our most cost-effective parks. And so this has, this could be structured so that that could happen too and minimize our costs. So if we were agree that this is an asset and a valuable public asset, then let's save it, and let's use the park bonds money to buy it and figure it out. And I support the motion going forward, and I think we should actually have our checkbook out and be ready to sign that. The risk is, if we can't figure it out, we sell it. We might even make money on that proposition. But that's the downside risk. If we can't figure it out, we don't have to keep it. But I think it deserves a good shot, and I think we should follow through and look at ways of preserving this. I did have one question, real quickly, and number two, and the whereas the preservation renovation be done with minimal or no net cost to the city? I'm assuming that preservation, renovation are after the purchase, because you can't do it without purchasing it first. Is that correct?
Yeah, okay. Site control comes first.
Buy it first, then preserve it, and renovate it.
Got to have site control.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly and absolutely with what Councilor Pryor said. He captured a great deal of my first thoughts on this. I would also add to that that I worked very, very hard on this four or five years ago and had some folks from the U of L ready to partner with folks who were interested in that site's preservation and continued use. Wasn't able to come to fruition under the circumstances, and that was very disappointing to me. And I've worked long and hard to see, how can we afford to do this? I think Chris captured that well in talking about what it would cost us and what we don't have in the way of affordability for both, for either the purchase or for the long-term maintenance, which is a greater concern to me. I don't believe I can support this motion tonight, but I absolutely welcome further discussion. I would support the motion on one condition. And the reason I won't support the motion is because I don't want to put staff to that much work when I know from what I've investigated about what the options are for them finding any workable solution. There is one, and I will say, in principle, I think it makes more sense for our community to own a Civic Stadium than a Civic Golf Course. And were the makers of the motion willing to direct the manager towards the sale for its value of nearly $4 million at Laurelwood, I would consider the idea that that's a place we could find the money to do this, but I'm not certain that they would make that amendment. Thank you.
Yes, are you interested in that?
Not really, no. With all due respect, Mike, that's a little stretch for me.
We have $4 million in North Eugene Community Park we could use.
Councilor Taylor, your turn.
We're still waiting.
Thank you. I was here when we passed the bond measure, when we created it. It did not say parkland in North Eugene. It said for land acquisition. And the purpose was, we knew we couldn't develop a lot of parks, but the land won't last. We can't make any more land, and we need to save what we have for the future. There were people back when this town, I think it had a population of 20,000 or 30,000 when they saved Spencer Butte, and it was a real hardship. And people were thinking of the future and thinking of future people, and did it for us, for the people who live now. And it would be a shame if we destroy something that was built then that is a treasure that would be valued by people all over the country. I talked, I was talking to a man from Alaska while I was in Virginia, who was telling his young son about that. He found out it was from Eugene, and he said, they have this wonderful old stadium there. And it is something that people, it's very rare, it's important to save it. We have destroyed so much in this city and of our history, and its historical preservation is a goal in itself. And this particular spot is valuable to lots of people, to people have memories there. But the structure itself is valuable and important to save, but the land is important too. And when people start getting jealous about where the land is, I think you save things where they are. We can't move people. Everybody in this city almost uses the Ridgeline Trail, but yet they say, oh, South Eugene has all of that land. It is where it is. That's where the hill is, and that's where the forest is, and that's where we save it. And, well, I guess that's, I will enthusiastically support the motion. It's a first step, and thanks.
Hey, Councilor Evans, and then we'll vote.
Okay. I will say this as a confession, and I appreciate Counselor Pryor's position on this as well as Counselor Clark's. But I am a baseball guy, and I played baseball in high school and American Legion ball in Cleveland. And I grew up, actually, at one point where we lived, I grew up about six blocks away from a ballpark called League Park. That is where Babe Ruth hit his 500th home run. And I used to hear stories that my uncles and my grandfather used to tell me about going to League Park. That was an inner-city park. That was a park where the streetcar used to go by. That was a park that was a walkable place to go. That was a resource and a gem until they let it fall into disrepair. I think that preserving a piece of our history is critical. Using this as a functional public resource is another important part of really retaining the character of Eugene. Some people have different views of that. I think it's important. I think our history is important. We have too little history in the West Coast that has been un-preserved over many, many years. So with that, I really think that we can work out alternatives and find, you know, proactive solutions to addressing the issue of Civic Stadium. I don't see it as being an impossible climb. And as has been pointed out earlier, if we are unable to keep this in the public domain, then, you know, there's always the option to sell the property to somebody else.
So in conversations that I had earlier with the city manager, he just needs to, I want to be sure that he has clarity on what he's being directed to do, and so.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Probably a couple of things. One is, I just want to make sure expectations of what comes back to you, because the RFP process that 4J is going through is a relatively short timeline. The same people that would work on this are also working on all your budget items. And so there isn't infinite amount of staff time, but it feels like the question really is, is are you okay spending public dollars, whatever they are, the bond fund, on acquiring the property? And then after that, it's really a question of what you use it for. Because when we get down to number three, for example, it's items B and C, really the way we would find that out is issue our own RFP to find out who would be interested in preserving the stadium and providing some sort of activity in that. And that's how we would know eventually whether or not there's a net cost to the city for preserving and renovating the stadium. You know, there have been various proposals put out in the last several years. I know, Councilor Brown, you've been through some, Counselor Clark has been through some. We've seen a couple of business plans. I don't think in the next 30 or 45 days, I will be able to assure you whether any or all of those meet item two at the top, and that there's no net cost to the city. One, we won't have the opportunity to go through all of those. Two, there's potentially a dozen ideas that people will have, whether or not they're going to play out financially. But if the council says, yes, we want to purchase the, or acquire the property somehow, then we can go out and try to figure out how you would acquire the property, what are the options for, or bringing the property underneath the city's ownership, which is a difference in this.
You're suggesting it be too out of the motion? It's a goal. Says it's a goal, doesn't say.
Right.
It's not, you know, it's not prescriptive, and it's a future goal.
Yeah, well, I guess what I'm, what I'm trying to get at is, we can spend a lot of time with 4J, L.A.N.E., United, Save Civic, Travel L.A.N.E. County, and a host of others trying to think through a variety of plans to find out whether the ongoing operations and maintenance of the stadium is a financial positive or negative. I guess for me, it's regardless of what we find out there, are we interested in purchasing the property, acquiring it, bringing it under our purview, which then we would go out with an RFP and actually really be able to answer the question. And whether or not all that provides really more information for you to make a decision on what we do with the eventuality of the stadium. I guess that's what I'm asking. Because it's a lot of work for us, and it's the same people doing the same work.
So it sounds like to me that most of this would be like an aspirational goal, but your real question is, do you want me to go ahead and work on purchasing Civic? That is the central.
I think that's the central goal, because if the answer is, yes, we're willing to go spend the city's dollars on purchasing or acquiring it somehow, then part, what I think we can provide is, here's potential options for acquiring it, regardless of what the future use is, and not spend all the time on the future use.
Councilor Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I have read emails from 4J board members. I have spoken to three of them personally, and they attended their work session when they discussed the, their RFP process for Civic Stadium. And I see a board member here, so I would like her to nod her head either up or down or sideways, if I get it wrong, up or down, if I'm going to present the gist of what I heard. What I heard was, I heard two very important things. I heard, and I believe this was in an email from the board chair, that the board is going to, they're willing to be flexible with the RFP process and perhaps even delay it a little bit, depending on what the city does. So we're obviously not telling them what to do. I would never dream of telling 4J what to do with Civic Stadium or anything. I think they want, they would, my guess is, they would appreciate some direction, because I think most of the board members don't want to see it fall by the wayside and be lost. The other thing is, that I've heard them say, and I believe it was also in an email, is that they are not hidebound to getting the most, to getting the highest price out of the property. That is not the main criterion for selling the property. In other words, if a proposal was maybe offering less money but had a higher public purpose that kept it in, you know, community recreational and say such as rehabilitating it, that they would consider that seriously and perhaps would award it to, rather than, say, a commercial operation that wants to knock it down but is willing to pay a million or $2 million more. Now, did I kind of get pretty close with both of those things? She's going, yeah, more or less. Okay. Well, see, this is why we need to talk to 4J. Not to tell them what to do by any means, but to come up with ideas. In fact, you know what their last, I just like to remind everyone, that their last RFP thing, which was two and a half years ago, they actually waited to the proposals, they rated the lease options higher than the sale options. Because I think at that time, they were thinking, well, maybe we don't really want to get rid of it, but maybe this could be a moneymaker for us on a, you know, a ground lease or yearly lease or, and so I have no idea how they're going to wait the various criterion, criteria of their new proposal. The thing is.
Can I be in the queue, Mayor?
The people that want to preserve this, and it's a widespread community sentiment, they need a vehicle to channel money and ideas into, and we don't have that yet. We don't have that. The city is the only entity that can possibly be that vessel.
So I've got Councilor Zelenka, Councilor Evans, and Councilor Clark. Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I think we should be more clear about this. I think we should make it less ambiguous, for 4J's sake and for the city manager's sake. If I got this proposal as a board member, I wouldn't know what, quite what to do with it. I'm not sure what it says. And if I got, and if I were the city manager, I'd say, this is fine, but it all presupposes that we purchase it, and you're not talking about that in the motion. So my inclination is to add something to this that directs the city manager to prepare a proposal to purchase the Civic Stadium with park bonds money. And if that's amenable to folks, I would, I could propose that as a friendly amendment.
Yeah, I can, I can accept that amendment, Alan, and I can, I can say, I think that it's worth investigating, you know, the positives and the negatives. What's the upside, what's the downside? If we go forward with a proposal to look at the purchase and it doesn't pencil out, then, you know, we leave it as it is. But if there is some possibility that there is, you know, significant upside for the city and the community, I want us to at least have the opportunity to investigate that, explore it, and look at the depth of what that would be.
You finished?
Would second.
I'm not so sure I can support that, because there's two options. Site control can mean different things. Site control can mean purchase outright. It can also mean lease, long-term lease. And I'm, since we don't know the criteria of 4J's, you know, RFP process, right away we're saying, well, we're not even going to propose a lease option, a long-term, a lease or lease to buy. I mean, there's three options really, purchase outright, lease, lease to buy.
Yeah, how about, ask the city manager to prepare a proposal to lease.
Site control.
Or buy the Civic Stadium.
And then you're suggesting you leave all the rest of the stuff out, or this is in addition to it?
Just add to it.
Just to clarify that section. I don't have a problem with that.
All right.
Okay, then I will make that as a friendly amendment.
And I'll accept.
I'll accept.
I think it's, now it's incorporated into the motion. All right, so Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to say this as humbly and respectfully as I know how, but I think that if we believe that we can find somehow the money pain-free to buy Civic Stadium, and then come the spring, close or cut significant city services with a budget that's in trouble, and then expect the community to support any kind of bond to rebuild City Hall, we will respectfully be out of our minds. be out of our minds.
Okay, then.
I didn't, I wasn't clear what he said.
All right, are you ready to vote on this?
Excuse me, Mayor, can I ask one clarifying question?
Sure.
Since you're leaving in the rest of the motion, could either Counselor Evans or Counselor Brown explain what you mean by a Civic Stadium authority? Because I probably get the job of trying to develop that part of this, and I'm not sure what this means.
Well, let me tell you what my intent was around that. We have separate recreational authorities within this county. So, in Springfield, you have, you know, Willamah Lane that does Parks and Rec and that kind of thing. I'm looking at this as a different model to, you know, have its own taxing bonding authority to explore that option that takes that out of the realm of the city or 4J and has a standalone effect.
So, you're talking about a special district?
A special district, yes.
Okay.
But I want to be clear on that, that that's not being recommended. It's being, you may recommend it, but in the language here, it says that such a plan will explore and consider. So, nobody's signing up for anything of that nature by supporting this motion. I, clear?
Clear.
Okay, all right. Okay, ready to vote? Okay. All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five. In opposition, one, Counselor Clark.
I would be a no.
What I thought, so it's five to two. It passes. Thank you very much. Okay, last up, community block grant financing options for homeless sheltering.
And I'll just turn over to Michael Wist in the interest of time.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight I would like to discuss the potential for CDBG for use toward homeless sheltering The annual action plan process includes programming both CDBG and home funds. The primary purpose of CDBG is to address the needs of low and moderate income persons by investing in neighborhoods, housing, and job creation activities. The city is a CDBG entitlement jurisdiction and has received annual entitlement grants since 1975. The annual process includes the following: review of funding priorities set in the five-year consolidated plan. The CDBG advisory committee reviews proposals for funding and makes recommendations. Council makes the final decision based on those recommendations. And then annual projects are reported in the action plan for that year and then approved by HUD. For fiscal year 2013, Eugene received just over 1.2 million in CDBG funds. This amount represents an overall downward trajectory of the program's funding over the last 10 years, which has seen a 22% decline. This decline has greatly affected the number of programs that are able to be funded in any given year. Staff has continued to strategically address these declines while still trying to meet the priorities set out in the consolidated plan. Currently, we have no word on what funding levels will be for the next year, but updates from the Capitol have the House of Representatives Transportation, Housing, and Urban Development Appropriations Subcommittee proposing a 50% cut to the program, while the Senate's similar subcommittee is proposing just a 3% cut. Yet while funds continue to decline, the Community Development Block Grant remains a flexible funding source for investments in low and moderate income communities. I'd like to highlight some of that flexibility and now discuss the HUD criteria for sheltering Eligible uses of CDBG funds are defined and regulated by HUD. The eligible activities specific to the financing of programs that address homelessness or sheltering can typically be broken into four categories. These include an acquisition of real property, development of facilities, rehabilitation or repurpose of existing facilities, and operational support for public services. Acquisition typically involves the purchase of undeveloped land or the purchase of property with existing structures. The city has a history of acquisition through either home or CDBG funds. Construction is pretty self-explanatory. We could construct facilities with CDBG funding or pay for site improvements of a piece of Under rehabilitation, we could rehab any existing facilities that are seen fit. This includes both public and residential facilities. Many of these activities complement one another, and the city has passed projects where funding was provided for joint acquisition and rehabilitation of a facility perhaps, or acquisition of land, and then the construction of workforce housing. Finally, public services is an option awarded to us through CDBG. These typically cover operations and administrative support and maybe some supplies for a nonprofit organization. This is only for newer expanded services. CDBG is not able to be used to replace previously existing local funding, and we are allowed to use up to 15% of our annual allocation to fund public services. The City of Eugene has a long history of using CDBG to target projects that address homeless needs, and we consistently seek projects that meet the eligible criteria for addressing homelessness. Traditionally, the city has targeted project types that include rehabilitation activities, nonprofit capital investments, and funding of public services. One example is the Vet Lift Program. This used 734,000 in low interest to rehab loans to three of St. Vincent de Paul's Vet Lift developments. Vet Lift provides assistance to homeless veterans who are duly diagnosed with substance abuse and/or mental health issues. Vet Lift provides housing for more than 50 veterans. The city also manages an emergency and minor home repair program that helps people stay in their home by offering assistance for critical home repairs. This program is also teamed with, this project was also used home funds for the acquisition of these sites, and CDBG was used for the rehabilitation. The city also has invested in our local nonprofits to fund acquisition and rehabilitation of facilities. These projects are announced through a request for proposal every other year and reviewed by a subcommittee of the Community Development Block Grant Advisory Committee. Since 2005, the city has allocated over 1.7 million to nonprofit capital projects, and of that, over 1 million or 61% has gone to homelessness program providers. Examples include Looking Glass's New Roads Drop-In Facility for Youth in the upper right, whose acquisition and rehabilitation were aided with the city's CDBG funds. The St. Vincent de Paul Lindholm Service Center expansion, which is currently underway and includes a doubling of the seating space and, I believe, a quadrupling of the locker storage at that site, and the addition of a commercial kitchen. And Food for Lane County's downtown dining room receives CDBG funding for accessibility improvements and expansion of their facilities downtown. The city packages a portion of its CDBG funds, $350,000 annually, with other local funds and partners with the Human Services Commission of Lane County to allocate and assist in management of these funds. The CDBG portion of this allocation accounts for 25% of this year's total City of Eugene human services allocation. These funds are then put to use in the community in partnership with local service providers. Since 2005, the city has allocated over 3.1 million in CDBG funding for public services through the HSC. Of these funds, almost 2.9 million or 90% have gone to programs addressing direct needs of homeless people in Eugene. The seven agencies lifted above will receive CDBG public service funding for the 2013 fiscal year. Six of these agencies will use these funds towards programs that directly address the needs of homeless individuals and families, or 83% of this year's CDBG service allocation. While the City of Eugene historically provides a number of examples of how to use CDBG as a tool to address homelessness in our community, for the sake of this conversation, I wanted to highlight a few cases that highlight the cost of construction-related development of conventional shelters. I will note that neither of these examples used CDBG funds, but just kind of offer a little bit of frame of scale and scope. First was the Eugene Mission and their new expansion for their women's center. Strictly cash operating expenses is roughly $2 million. That does not include in-kind donations, which would effectively double that to $4 million. As it stands, there's room for 91 beds at a maximum. The construction costs of the addition were about 1.6 million. Another example with which I have familiarity would be the Boulder Shelter for the homeless. This facility was constructed in 2003. It's LEED certified, so there was a lot of frills in the construction for 5.7 million. It offers 120 maximum emergency beds in dorm style with 30 transitional beds in a separate dorm. The annual operating expenses for this are roughly 1.8 million, and again, doubling that if you include in-kind donations. So, with that information, I'd like to open it up for discussion, any questions the council may have.
Okay, Counselor Taylor, would you like to hear out the questions for discussion? Where was that last shelter you showed?
That was Boulder, Colorado.
Oh, it wasn't here?
No.
And there is enough money to build a shelter, if we decide to use it that way, right?
It would depend on the scale of the shelter and the style of shelter. As it currently stands, we receive roughly 1.2 million. It would, a decision would have to be made about if we'd want, if the city would wish to support that for operational purposes or just sheer construction or a mixture of both. Currently, once you remove, if we were to just consider construction rehabilitation, you figure 1.2 million annually without, assuming that remains static, once you remove the administration and public services allocation, you'd be left with roughly $400,000 annually for construction or rehabilitation costs.
And that's something we could have been doing instead of some other things.
Yes and no. HUD does have a time limit in which you have to expend their funds by. At any given moment, we're only allowed to carry one and a half times of our previous year's allocation. So, there is a timeline by which we have to spend money. If we were decided to save that money, it would come at a sacrifice to other programs, and we'd have to make sure that all other past programs have drawn on their funds or had a plan to draw on them quickly.
So, if we decided now that we wanted to build, use that money to build a homeless shelter, we could start doing something, is that right?
Yes.
And we have land already? I'm thinking we keep building apartments, subsidized apartments, which takes care of only a few people, and they aren't transitional, they are permanent.
If we were talking about building permanent apartments, then we have other resources that could assist with that, namely the home program and our state, well, which utilizes federal low-income housing tax credits. That's a little bit different, but it's considerably different than talking about building shelters, which home funds are not allowed to be used for. As far as the land question, we do not currently have any ready parcels in the land bank. We'll be looking at potential sites to expand that in the near future. Currently, though, we do not have anything that's ready to be developed or shovel-ready in a sense.
I thought there was land at 13th and Chambers.
There are some redesignation, a zoning redesignation that would have to happen for that. It is not something that could easily turn around or quickly turn around, I would guess, into an affordable housing site.
And we couldn't use that instead for a homeless shelter? It seems to me the urgent thing is to have people have a place to sleep and become clean at that which is transitional while they're finding a way to live some other place.
We would have to look into what the zoning options would be for that and then amending the metro plan as well as the neighborhood refinement plan, I believe.
So, if we wanted to do that, what, how would we direct you to do that?
You could direct the city manager to...
I guess what I would suggest, if there's an interest in something like that, we would want to come back with what we think would be the appropriate motion to make on that.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Saret, and then Pryor, and then Evans.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Counselor Zelenka.
Thank you, Michael. I'm glad you finally got to make your presentation.
10:45.
Well, yeah. So, am I correct in saying that currently our CDGB funds are being programmed into needed services right now in terms of what we've allocated?
I think that's safe to say. We have a system in place that does allocate them to high priority needs. It's based on our consolidated plan, and we have a strong history of using them for such things. And this year again, our funds will be open for RFP, most likely. It would have to be reviewed by the advisory committee, but they would be open again on the regular schedule for nonprofit capital improvements. So, similar to what I highlighted as far as the Lindholm Center expansion and projects of that vein.
So, my concern is that we have a system in place right now. It's very robust. It's definitely not meeting all the need, but there's a system in place. And I'd be very hesitant for us to start repurposing funds in the near term to meet this need for shelter, because I feel like we would, to use the Jenga analogy that happened earlier at our budget committee meeting, that we'd pull apart some of the system that is out there serving current need now. The Human Services Commission just had a retreat today, and we were talking about the RFP process. So, we put out an RFP for two years' worth of a cycle, but there's a caveat on the contracts we sign with the social service providers that this is depending on funds actually coming through. So, my concern is the funds may come down from the feds, and I wouldn't want us to pull away funds that are going to a current system to try and set up something new. I would be interested in planning to use funds down the road for what Counselor Taylor's thinking of in terms of emergency shelters. So, is there a planning process that we could employ so that we can be planning for a shift of funds that doesn't pull things out from under our current system?
We could bring that up, yeah. There definitely could be a planning process if we, council decided that was the route they'd like to go to, either bolster funds for a future shelter. That'd probably be a part of a longer conversation.
Okay. And then your examples point to how expensive it is to create a shelter facility and keep it running, so that's a challenge that we would face. And so, how does the panel that reviews the potential RFPs, how do they take input from the community?
They hold the public hearing, and they're also all-public meetings by which they make decisions, and us as staff present to them, and we go over the proposals, and all of those are done in public meetings. And they host the public hearing before it's brought to you as a council to make a decision.
Thank you.
Counselor Pryor.
Thank you. Counselor Saret actually hit on a number of the points that I was going to make, and just to kind of reinforce it, you're not aware of any eligible CDBG money that's not being programmed right now.
There is, there is unprogrammed, well, there's programmed, all the money has to be programmed every year.
Right.
So, that there's no pot of unprogrammed money that would quickly be...
There's no money laying around that we could use. It's basically going into, in this case, the Human Services Commission, that's where that money's being allocated.
Right, and there's some that has yet to be drawn that was allocated, for instance, for a land bank acquisition.
For the Housing Policy Board.
Oh, no, that's done by the Community Development Advisory Committee, but usually in conjunction with the Housing Policy Board.
Using conjunction. So, those two organizations use the bulk of the CDBG funds, and it's programmed through them.
Right.
When we served on the Opportunity Eugene Group a couple of years ago, 50-plus people representing a wide and diverse group of folks involved in human services in one way or another, one of the, if I recall, one of the things that an entire group agreed on early on was not to fund their work at the expense of the existing human service network. The point I'm making is, even the folks who were homeless advocates on the Opportunity Eugene Group wanted to take money away from the current human service programming and funding mechanism to pay for their services. They wanted to make the pie bigger, not just slice it differently. And I appreciated that, and I supported that, and I still think that's a very important principle. You don't want to rob Peter to pay Paul. We do need to make the pie bigger. So, it's not that I don't want a shelter. I think we should figure out a way, and if there was a planning process or something where we could talk about that... where we could talk about that and plan for it and figure out where the money was going to come to do it. But I don't want to take CDBG money, which is programmed through the Human Services Commission and is doing good work, and take it away from the existing system in order to fund something else. That would, to me, be a direct violation of the consensus that we got from the Opportunity Eugene process, which I thought was very good.
Counselor Evans.
I'll echo the comments of Counselor Saret and Counselor Pryor and add this to the conversation. One of the things that we don't do up here, and in general, is that we don't have the conversation about the other partners that are involved in this. We keep talking about what the City of Eugene, the City of Eugene could do, and the reality is, is that those funds, we contribute to the Human Services Commission, and it is really the purview of the county, which is also a pass-through for state and federal funding as far as homelessness is concerned and other issues, that we have not had a collaborative conversation, to my knowledge, about, you know, what our role is vis-à-vis the county, the city, and really kind of putting our heads together. So I appreciate Counselor Taylor's inquiry here, but I think it's a little premature for us to step out and look at, you know, creating our own quote-unquote "shelter" without having a real conversation with Lane County about how something like that could come about.
Counselor Zelenka.
So CDBG money, it's basically zero sum. If we divert money to shelter, it cuts existing programs?
In the case of public services, that would be the case, because that's allocated ahead of time, typically, contingent on the annual funding.
Take that as a yes.
For the most part.
So which ones? Is that, on Slide 14, you had the current CDBG program with the box highlighted? Go back a couple. That one. So what's the purpose of the highlighted box there?
I highlighted those just to demonstrate that those are more focused on the needs of homeless, direct services for homelessness. Now, it's not specific necessarily to homelessness, like Whitebird Clinic doesn't only help homeless people, but I figured those are more germane to this topic than the work of Relief Nursery.
It's like $200,000, $300,000 in that range.
Just under $300,000.
So would those be programs that if we were going to divert to a shelter, we'd probably cut those?
If you were to use CDBG funds, yes.
Okay. So, and these are more or less ongoing programs. They've been funded over the years, and the idea is that we continue to fund them with the CDBG money that comes in.
Yes.
And then also, you mentioned that Congress, the House is suggesting a 50% cut in CDBG money, our funds, which is unconscionable, and Senate, a smaller, what was that percent? Five?
3%.
3%. And that would be very unfortunate if either of those happened. But also, we also have a housing-first strategy, don't we? That's what we've been doing over the years, my work on the HSC for years and sharing that. I mean, we moved purposefully into a housing-first strategy rather than a shelter strategy, putting people, doing what Susan Bann was talking about on the Provider Panel, which is getting people into housing, stabilizing them so they can get into permanent housing, as opposed to doing shelters. And as the mayor said, you know, we just don't have the stock that other cities have, the single occupancy type of buildings that we convert readily into these kind of shelters that other folks have, like San Francisco or other kind of bigger cities. And so we don't have something that's, we'd have to start from a scratch, so that makes it much more expensive to do. So that kind of problematic. I like the idea of planning for a shelter, but not at the expense of existing programs, but I'm not sure how you do that, especially in the face of CDBG money being potentially cut. Where, I mean, to plan for it, you have to come up with the capital, and then you also have to come up with the operating cost of it, with neither of which are small amounts of money, I would think. Anybody got any ideas about that, or question to answer?
So I'll jump in here.
Capital part's easier than the operating cost, yeah.
I'll jump in here and say that I think you don't know till you look. And what I want to say is that
Are you in the queue, Mayor?
Yes, sir. You want in the queue?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So number one is, some of the problems that we're seeing out in the community are because our social services have already been changed, and their ability to provide services has already been produced. So we've had a loss of provision of services because of the shrinking allocations. So that's one thing. So then, I don't think what we want to do is shrink them more. On the other hand, I do think there's been a change in attitude. A couple of years ago, we were definitely on the housing-first model, but I think we've come to understand that you have to take care of the shelter piece, because not everybody's going to get into housing, and there's still going to be all these people that need a place to be. So somehow, we have to deal with both of those things. And I suspect that Counselor Saret wants to say something more about this, but I think the thing that we started to talk about, and that could be part of a conversation, first of all, you'd have to decide if you really wanted to sort of investigate the possibility of expanding our shelter ability, and that'd be the first decision. And then the second one would be this little thing that you started, which was about when you give any kind of tax breaks or whatever, that some of those funds go into this housing fund, and then you begin to think about, well, what could that make happen? So I think there's a big conversation, and I appreciate Counselor Taylor wanting us to have that conversation, but I think this is the wrong end. This would be, what can we fit into the money, the existing money, as opposed to how do we get to this expansion of services and this expansion of our ability to care for people who don't have any place to be? And that is, to me, the real question.
Counselor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to Counselor Taylor for some kind of bold, out-of-the-box thinking here. I think that's what's required. The problem's substantial, we all know that, and what we're doing right now isn't sufficient to the problem. I think it requires some bolder thinking. I think that Counselor Evans is correct that we're not bringing all of our resources to the table in the way of the partnerships that are available. I think that homelessness in our area is a regional problem, and we have been focused on City of Eugene solutions when we should be thinking about regional ones. There is another regional partner that we don't talk about in this particular set of solutions, and that's the University of Oregon. And the reason I bring that up is because I'm aware of another opportunity for the potential for a larger-scale shelter. Now, from tonight's conversation, I know staff doesn't have anywhere near enough to do, but there is a model. South Bend, Indiana has created a unique partnership between the city, the University of Notre Dame, and frankly, with them, the Catholic Church, to create a homeless shelter that is of substantial size, and frankly, substantial enough to address the need, much like we have. And what they do is combine the capital capacities of the university and the church, in that particular case, to have created the place that deals with shelter appropriately, and they use students at the university, much in a way we would use an intern, to help with programming that would be very much like our Project Homeless Connect, except on a daily, ongoing basis. I think there's a model there that could be useful to us, and I would like to suggest that staff investigate what they do.
Thank you. Counselor Saret.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate the comments. I appreciate Counselor Clark's looking into other models, and that sounds promising, although I think that is a private university, so that might be an issue. But I think drawing on the university is a great idea, too, and as well as our other jurisdictional partners. But what I really want to say is, I think with planning, planning ahead, we could draw upon other sources of funding. So the home funding, there's other ways to put funding together, as Mayor Piercey pointed out. If we have a plan, we can go to the state or the feds, and we can start to put something together. So I look forward to opportunities to engage in some planning around this. I'm not going to get into it tonight. The housing-first model is challenging for us locally because we don't have enough affordable housing to send people to, so Susan Bann pointed that out as well. So I really think we need to be looking at both strategies, a way to create more access to emergency and temporary shelter, and I refer to a shelter, but it doesn't have to be a single location. It could be a shelter system. But more emergency and temporary shelter, as well as investing in building more affordable housing and a diversity of that kind of housing. So I know there's some energy out in the community for that. Those things take time, they take planning, but I think it's worth getting into that now. And I do like the mayor bringing up, again, the idea of dedicating future revenue from unanticipated sources to this effort. So if we're planning for it, we can then start identifying ways to fund it.
And Counselor Taylor, would you wrap it up?
Thank you. Actually, we needed more time than this, but it took a long time to get this far. But I think it is a bigger thing than just Eugene, but if we could have a committee, maybe, I don't like forming more and more committees, but of Springfield, Lane County, and Eugene to talk about how to have emergency housing. But we will never build enough apartments for everybody who needs them, enough subsidized apartments. But we could help people with temporary shelter until they could find a way to move into other housing. And I don't think they would want to stay there forever, but what people need is a place with a bed, a place to take a shower, and a place to lock up their belongings, and that's a lot better than being out in the mud. So I would like help getting a motion to start investigating sources of funding for shelter, and won't try that tonight, but sometime soon. And I have a question. How does Boulder pay for their shelter?
Half, roughly half came from private donations, a large capital campaign, and the other half, non-specified government funding, although I spoke with the executive director, and he believed that CDBG was in a source within the state and local government funds they received.
Okay. And we could use some of the funds that are currently being used for subsidized housing, is that correct?
For shelter.
For shelter.
We could not use home funding, which is the primary source of our subsidized housing.
Okay, I would like to know all the possible ways we could do it and how we could cooperate with, or ask Springfield and Lane County to cooperate with us. Thank you.
You and Daddel.
Yes, that'll be it.
Thank you.